Good evening, everyone. I now call to order this April 8th, 2025, meeting of Lancaster City Council. A few reminders at the top of the meeting for everyone with us tonight. Please take a moment to silence your devices, phones, if you haven't done so already. This meeting and its participants are being recorded and livestreamed. Anyone addressing council during public comment periods should do so at the microphone here in front of us to be heard both in the room and on the livestream. Please begin all comments with your name and block of residence for our meeting record. Public comment is limited to three minutes per speaker, and I will use the light that's here in front of me to keep time. It will turn green when a speaker begins, it will flash yellow when there is one minute remaining, and will flash red when time has been expended. And I want to thank all of you in advance for ensuring that everyone has equal time this evening. For all of those who are willing and able, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Mr. Harris, would you please call the role of members?
Yes, Madam President. Mr. Madden?
Here.
Mr. Royo?
Here.
Mr. Gleese?
Here.
Ms. Craig?
Here.
Ms. Diaz? Mr. Hirsch?
Here.
And President Beckett?
Here. Counselor Diaz is excused this evening. Next item is the approval of the minutes of the March 25th, 2025, meeting.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for our meeting minutes. Counselors, any comments on those minutes? Hearing none. Mr. Harris?
Mr. Madden?
Aye.
Mr. Royo?
Aye.
Mr. Gleese?
Aye.
Ms. Craig?
Aye.
Mr. Hirsch?
Aye.
And President Beckett?
Aye. All right, our next item on the agenda this evening: Proclamations, Honors, Awards, and Resolutions of Recognition. We have one this evening, Resolution Number 23, 2025. Mr. Harris, if you would.
A resolution of the Council of the City of Lancaster designating April 2025 as Sexual Assault Awareness Month in the City of Lancaster, Pennsylvania.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Counselors, thank you very much for allowing me to introduce this resolution again this year. April is Sexual Assault Awareness Month, and it brings awareness that sexual violence continues to be widespread and affect all members of our community. During this month, the resolution, I'd like to proudly affirm that the Lancaster YWCA is still Lancaster County's Designated Rape Crisis Center, and applaud the work that they do in our community for sexual assault prevention and counseling, all at no cost. They are hosting numerous events this month to help raise awareness, support survivors, and promote prevention efforts. And I'd like to invite the team from the YWCA to the podium this evening to say a few Good evening, and thank you for being here.
Good evening. Thank you. My name is Theo. I work at the YWCA Lancaster Sexual Assault Prevention Counseling Center. This is my colleague, Matty Wrestler, who also works at the Sexual Assault Prevention Counseling Center. I just wanted to take a few moments to talk about what we offer, services, for both the council and for the public. So like you said, we offer counseling and therapy services at no cost to both victim survivors of sexual violence, as well as their significant others, which could be family members, partners, friends, neighbors, anyone who else who is impacted by that violence as well. We have a 24/7 sexual assault hotline that you can call in any time of the day. We're on-call for you. You can call in if you need resources, someone to talk to, or want to get set up for our services. And that number is 717-392-7273. And again, that's 24/7. We're always here for you. We have medical accompaniment. We accompany victim survivors of sexual violence to the hospitals, again, at no cost, to help them through the process and offer support. Similar, well, that's a hard word. Similar, nope. As well as legal accompaniment. We do offer legal accompaniment as well, and that's to court proceedings all throughout the way, even police interviews for victim survivors of sexual violence. Again, that's at no cost. We want to be there with all of the systems that victim survivors of sexual violence are interacting with, so we try to be at each moment we can. We also do a lot of prevention education for the community. We go to schools, workplaces, churches, community organizations, anywhere really that we can talk about prevention around sexual violence and around consent boundaries, handling difficult feelings, healthy relationships. And that's something, if you're interested in, as for your organization, you can always go on our website, and the programs that we offer are on there as well. Am I missing anything, Matty?
I would just add that we also have support groups as part of our set of services. The first Monday of each month, so actually it was just last night, we have an adult survivor gathering that happens from 6:00 to 7:00 p.m. at the Lime Street location of YWCA Lancaster, so it's right around the corner. And all of those services that we've listed are also available in any language. We have interpretation services through PCAR, which is the Pennsylvania Coalition to Advance Respect. So we're able to call them or even bring them in in person, again, at no cost, to offer those services to anyone in any language, so we're trying to take down as many barriers as possible there. That's everything. Thank you.
Thank you so much for being here this evening. Counselors, are there any council comments on this Resolution of Recognition? Comments from the public? Hearing none. Mr. Harris?
Mr. Madden?
Aye.
Mr. Royo?
Aye.
Mr. Gleese?
Aye.
Ms. Craig?
Aye.
Mr. Hirsch?
Aye.
And President Beckett?
Aye. Thank you. And, Counselors, we will, I have a presentation copy to present to our YWCA staff this evening, and we can adjourn to this side of the room to take a brief photo, if everyone would bear with us while we do that. And do you have someone to take the photo? Fabulous. Okay. We will be right back. Thank you. This is reserved for residents who contacted the city clerk prior to the meeting to request the opportunity to address counsel. Again, the cutoff is 2:00 today for these comments, so these are the folks that come, or, excuse me, these are the folks that requested to speak before 2:00 today. Declaration of comments is limited to three minutes per speaker, and again, please begin with your name and block of residence for our meeting record. Mr. Harris, our first speaker this evening.
Yes, Madam President. Our first speaker is Russell Durfee.
Good evening. If you see the green light, you're good. That might not be on. Do you see the green light there?
No. There we go. So, over the past few meetings, we've heard feedback from the mayor regarding her views on, I guess, the ineffectiveness of civilian review boards and the general challenges to reform posed by the city's agreements with the police or police unions. To the extent that these views are valid, they clearly represent a significant roadblock to the progress that the community is demanding. So after reflecting on this, I might just have some questions for the council that I hope are constructed, but I also will acknowledge that probably can't be answered here tonight, and I would appreciate the opportunity to continue the conversation outside of this in person or an email, however. So the first question is, what, I'd like to know what is the status of the city's collective bargaining agreement with the police, and where the public can access this information? I tried to find a current agreement and can only find an agreement signed by the mayor that was due to expire in December of 2022. And my understanding is that sometimes union contracts can continue past their expiration date unless they're compelled back to the renegotiation table, so I was just wondering if that's the case here. In general, what would be the council's plans for upcoming renegotiations with the police union or the police, given the feedback that the constituents you serve have given over the past month? This is my question. Question two: Is there potential to include the establishment of a civilian review board in any, and I'll say, one with actual authority, because I know that's been a question, to include that in the renegotiations of the city and the police? I think the mayor's comments have made clear that the police will not in good faith address the community's demands if they come from a civilian review board, or really any entity for that matter, if they don't have the proper authority. So I'm questioning if that authority exists at all in the city right now, frankly, and I feel like a lot of us are, maybe including the mayor. So a civilian review board with real authority would require adequate funding, which could be tied to the police budget to discourage attempts to undercut that funding. It would have independent investigative power and access to police records, including body camera footage. I'll say too, having looked into this, that I understand that the precedent, that's been set in states like Connecticut and New Jersey, where, you know, frankly, the biggest power for a civilian review board is subpoena power, and that has largely come from state legislatures, not municipal like this. But I think the important fact to recognize is that subpoena power isn't given unless there's a civilian review board to give it to. We are trying to lay the groundwork for that.
Mr. Harris, I appreciate your comments, but we've hit three minutes. If I may endeavor to answer your first question, and then I do have your other list.
Can I wrap up?
Just very, very briefly, because we've already gone over through this.
Okay. Yeah, I just think that if the alternative is nothing, nothing's not enough, is part of the point. And we could fund this, possibly, which was going to be my third question, with the emergency relief funds. I'd love to learn more about how we can use those funds, even if that's to replace the police department, if we do go to the negotiating table and they don't like the deal, you know? Like, I'd like to know what those funds are for as well. Thank you.
Just briefly to ask your first question, and then I'm happy to respond in more detail, because I don't have all the answers in front of me at the moment as well. But to your question about the current collective bargaining agreement, it has been negotiated since then. I don't know exactly where to find it, but I can help you with that. And the current one is in effect through, is it 2026, Mayor Sarachi, or 2020, the end of 2025?
12/31/2026.
12/31/2026. I knew it, and then I wanted to verify that I was correct, so thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Harris, our next public commenter for this period.
Yes, Madam President. Our next speaker is Karen Schler.
Hi. Good evening. Thanks for having me, and thanks for all that you do. I know that it takes out a lot of time out of your personal lives. I really appreciate it. I'm here to talk a little bit about the groups of kids that I've witnessed and seen, and I hate that that's kids, because, oh, my name, Karen Schler, how about we start there? Boys and Girls Clubs of Lancaster. My properties are West Lemon Street, Water Street, and Duke Street. So back to talking about the groups of folks that I've seen traveling on bikes that have been unsafe, and this has been over the course of the last two to three years that we've witnessed this. I really feel like this is a safety issue. It's a community problem that we have to address, and I would like to be solution-driven. I don't think kids need to be taught to not ride in and out of traffic and down the middle of the road. I think those are basic skills that kids learn, we all learn, to not ride our bikes that way. I've experienced groups of, I keep referring to them as kids, but I've recently learned that they are young adults, some of them. And that's been difficult for us to handle, because we only handle and deal with kids. We have had, on multiple occasions, reached out to some of those adults to have meetings, to have conversations, to find a healthy way to have fun on bikes and not have a thrill of danger on bikes. For those that don't know, my office is on Vine and Water Street. My window looks over the corner of Vine and Water Street. The things that I witness when I'm taking a little break from emails and look out my window and see the hordes of kids, young adults, popping wheelies and burning through that stop sign terrifies me, actively scares me, and I don't want that on our conscience. What the club has done, as I said, reach out to some of the young adults, trying to come up with more conversations, we've had one already. We've also applied for a grant for bike racks so that kids can safely park their bikes at Boys and Girls Clubs. It's the only properties I can control. So our three locations will have brand-new bike racks hopefully by the spring, because I do think that that's some of the fear that the kids have with leaving their bikes out. Some of the bikes are quite expensive. Also, we're starting a bike-riding group that will be led with staff. It will start over in the southeast neighborhood and be led by staff, and will teach positive etiquette for kids to enjoy safe bike-riding. I see the light. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Our next speaker, Mr. Harris.
Yes, Madam President. Next is Ricardo Calderon.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening, council. Good evening, fellow community members. My name is Ricardo Calderon. I live in the Willow Street area. Today, I'm representing the mix and would like to speak on our relationship with the police department, and I have a few words I would like to share afterwards, but wanted to share that we obviously know that the relationship between the police department and community, while we're one, is very complex, and that's been around for as long as we can remember. Narrative is really important, though, and adding to that narrative, really want to share the powerful relationship we have, whether that's through the PAL program, whether that's through our work with the police department, through our Call to Action Committee, which we see one of our partners here, and coming together to really try to address the violence in our city, whether that's through National Night Out, Art in the Park. If you've ever seen a bunch of kiddos having a really good time on the corner of Orange and Duke, Orange and Prince Street, that was us, having a really good time. For those of you who are not aware who the mix is or what we do, we're a nonprofit organization that really specializes around after-school programming and out-of-school time initiatives, trying to foster really powerful educational environments for our young people and families. And while I'm not here to specifically talk about a specific issue, I do know that humanizing our police officers and our young people in communities is really important. We will always have young people riding bikes and wanting to do things. That's never going to change. My little girl is learning how to ride a bike right now, and I stopped her from going into the street yesterday, and she's four years old. What I would love to see as a community is how we continue to humanize these important roles in our community, and I think that starts with building relationships. And the reason I wanted to come and speak on behalf of the mix is because we see that within our doors. When the police officers come into our building, we try very hard to establish a relationship, not seeing the officer in uniform, but the human behind the badge, to be able to understand what they're going through, to be able to understand what young people are going through. So no doubt, we have many, many issues that we have to take on. I would just want to encourage us, whether it's through the policies that we're looking to do, whether it's create initiatives such as the bike ride, how do we continue to find humanity in what we do and building those relationships? Because independent of what we try to do, young people will be young people, and I think as adults, it's our job to make sure that we're carefully building those relationships so there's a connection, so there's an understanding. So when there are altercations, humans are engaging with each other, not opposition. I think that's very, very important in our community, especially given the landscape of today's world, where everything is very extreme, everything is on either side, narratives of running, how we feel about people, how we choose to act. So I really, really hope that we can come together and figure out ways, not just from a storytelling perspective, but also a relationship-building perspective, how we're doing that for our community and for our students, in particular, our young folks. So really appreciate the time today, a lot of respect for what we're all doing here as we all play a role in this. And again, I just want to reemphasize, humanizing each other. We need to go back to humanizing who we are and finding our human in this space. Appreciate you all.
Thank you, Mr. Calderon. Mr. Harris, our next speaker.
Yes, Madam President. Next is Will Kiefer.
Mr. Kiefer, good evening.
Good evening, city council and Mayor Sarachi. Thanks for having me in tonight. I will add to this discussion and just want to paint a picture of some really important work being done collaboratively between the organization that I lead, which is Benchmark Program. We're at the intersection of Prince and Vine, very close to the Boys and Girls Club, and so the work between Benchmark Program and our local police force. In May or March of last year, we were awarded this grant from the Pennsylvania Commissioner on Crime and Delinquency called a VIP Grant, Violence Intervention and Prevention. It's a three-year grant, and it's beginning to target or to support kids who have been involved with some kind of firearm-related crime but aren't being charged. So at our organization, we have pathways to support kids who have gotten formally charged, they're incarcerated at the Youth Intervention Center, we have programs for them. But what we haven't been able to serve, and what we can't do without our police department, is I can't connect with the kids who are at that scene, who are detained, and then who are released back home. The police are the only ones at that incident who know those kids. And through this grant from the Pennsylvania Commissioner on Crime and Delinquency, we now have a pathway for police to get parent permission to release information about those children to Benchmark so that we can provide a one-on-one mentor for them. Now, we go to the house, connect with parents, connect with the kid, this is all voluntary. No one who is detained by the police and sent home has to come to Benchmark. But finally, through this proactive approach with police, we have a chance to connect with those kids, and I'm not sure they'd otherwise just walk into Benchmark Program for services. So I'm grateful to the police department for doing that work. I view that as upstream work, connecting with kids before they get a formal charge. And statistically, the kids who are at one of those crime scenes and sent back home without any formal charges are actually most likely to perpetuate violence. So we now have this chance to connect with them and serve them and support them when we otherwise wouldn't. And I couldn't do that work without police, and I don't think many people know that we're doing that work, because it's quiet, and it's small, and it's not fixing all the problems. But I think it's a start, and I have to be clear that we could not do that without them, and I'm grateful to them, and I want to see that work continue, and that's all.
Thank you very much. Mr. Harris, our next speaker this evening.
Our next speaker is Janet Simmons.
Is Ms. Simmons here? No. Okay. I'll call her at the conclusion and the second period, just in case that she comes in. After Ms. Simmons, Mr. Harris?
Yes, Mimi Shapiro.
Good evening.
Good evening, and thank you for letting me speak. I live at 239 North Concord Street in Lancaster, and I think everybody up there knows me. I am only speaking as a person and from my personal perspective. I am here tonight because I believe that our Lancaster City Police are good human beings and excellent policemen. They protect our community, but more important, they care about public safety. This is a public safety problem. Kids need to learn real-life lessons to have respect for rules and laws for everybody's safety. I am an educator, having worked with students of all ages. I know that sometimes kids do not think of the consequences, but imagine if they hit someone or if a driver hit one of them. I have witnessed kids driving their bikes in traffic recklessly, doing wheelies with only one tire on the ground, moving in and out on Duke Street, on Mulberry at King, again at Charlotte, and West Chestnut. These kids are just fooling around. It's frightening to me as a pedestrian, since I have been hit by a car and had two broken legs. Healing takes a long, long time, with lots and lots of physical therapy besides learning to walk again. Public safety, to quote Mayor Ernie Triano of Wildwood, New Jersey. Listen, this isn't a suggestion, it's the law. We are not playing games. When it comes to the safety of others, you break the rules, you pay the consequences. There are actually consequences for your actions. So I know that the police do an amazing job trying to get everybody and figure it all out, but they are not our enemies. They are here for us. So thank you very much for letting me speak.
Thank you, Ms. Shapiro. Mr. Harris, our next speaker.
Next speaker is Arthur Morris.
Good evening.
Good evening, council. Arthur Morris, 400 block of West Chestnut Street. My comments relate, as other comments have here this evening, to the police arrests of teenagers who were riding bikes on North Queen Street last month. I have previously witnessed this behavior by youth on bikes. They were cutting across traffic, doing wheelies, and generally showing off their skills. I'm sure they were having fun, but this was not the place for it. The behavior was reckless and a public safety threat to them, pedestrians, and drivers. I want to thank our police and the mayor for taking this action. Such reckless behavior must not be tolerated. Two other comments. I believe the police used reasonable methods to restrain these youth, which would not have been easy to do. These kids are in great shape, and they're quick, and I don't like the fact that the police have to put themselves in a position where they can get hurt as well. I do not believe they used excessive force. I appreciate those that spoke about connecting our youth with police and others to improve their lives. However, in the meantime, I urge parents and other adults who are associated with youth involved to take them to the police station, have them apologize, and then discuss what public service they can perform to help mitigate the consequences they face. This can be a learning experience when managed correctly. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mayor Morris. Our next speaker, Mr. Harris.
Is Jessica Lopez.
Good evening. I'm going to present you.
that this narrative that it's okay to beat on Black and Brown children for not having bike lights and popping wheelies in the street needs to stop. The conversations that were had here, like, I get the comments, I get the concerns, yes, and I love the fact that we do have organizations like this for our kids, but this set narrative from our community members that would never understand the issues of the Black and Brown community, that it's okay to put hands on children over riding bikes, is crazy. Now, the proposal I just handed you, guys, is a proposal that was given to the Baltimore Police Department in regards to use of forced tactics on youth. It highlights issues of certain tactics and why they should not be utilized on children. It gives solutions, and I believe that this form right here could lead yous into how to really deal with the issues that are transpiring with the police department and our youth. I don't believe that we can keep ignoring the fact that our children are being traumatized. Harm is harm. It don't have to be a car that hits them, it was a cop that hit them. So how are they supposed to go throughout their lives trusting police officers now? You don't trust crossing the street, and they don't trust cops. This narrative is wrong. Yeah, I've come in here week after week and yelled and screamed, and maybe yous heard me, maybe yous didn't. Now I'm giving you solutions. We are presenting you with solution after solution beyond just screaming, and yous are telling us no after no after no, this can't be done. No, these things can be done. These things can be incorporated in that union contract. There are things that can be done to protect the citizens, not just our police officers. So I really urge yous to take this into consideration. I really urge yous pass this on to Chief Mendez, who openly admitted that there was no difference in how they treat adults than how they treat children, and that is a problem. He really stood here and felt like it was okay, and he was proud of the fact and the way his officers treat our kids. That's not just our kids. Y'all all have kids intertwined in this situation somewhere that you know and love. This could be any one of them, and yes, we love the orgs that keep them out the way. That still does not change how the police officers deal with our children. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do we have one more speaker? Is that correct, Mr. Harris?
Yes. Next is Tony Dastre.
Good evening. Tony Dastre, 700 block of New Holland Avenue, City Council. I fell off my bike and hurt my leg. I've been trying to take it easy, especially since this weekend I had to beat Thaddeus Stevens for "Living the Experience." Get your tickets today, by the way. And sometimes I wonder if I have to beat Thaddeus Stevens right now, too. On account of pain, I didn't really want to be here tonight except for one item later under ordinances for first reading that needed attending to tonight. I know I can't miss it. So since I needed to be here physically, I figured I'd offer a free show in three acts. Not "Living the Experience," welcome to the Tony Show. In this first act, why I'm physically present at all. During the pandemic, council had working systems to meet and allow participation digitally. I'm not saying we should go hybrid tomorrow, but I don't think it would take much, a few steps, and planning over a couple months to get there. When it comes to live streaming and access, I've often thought the city of Lancaster has been good enough post-seethrough city days, but moments like this make me realize that good enough often just means good enough for now. And just because we're a walkable city doesn't mean someone limping like me tonight should have to come to 120 North Duke to make their public comments heard. And an obvious counterpoint, just because someone can stay home, doesn't mean that they will. I believe in a city where people can be heard, even when it hurts to stand. The neglect of digital access, the tools that let the meek speak and the lame stand should trouble us all because we've used these tools before. We know they work. The question is now whether we still believe everyone deserves a seat at the table, even if they can't make it to the room. Thank you.
Mr. Harris, do we have any additional speakers in the first period?
We do not.
Thank you. Just to double-check, Janet Simmons, I didn't see her come into the room. Okay. Great. We will now move into our next item on the agenda, which is reports requested by council. Do not believe we have any of those tonight, is that correct?
We do not.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Next item is reports of committees of council. These are the meetings held on April 1st, 2025. We began with the Public Safety Committee. Council DS is not here this evening. She had one item on her agenda, it was report to council. Public Works Committee, Council Hirsch.
Thank you, Council President. The Public Works Committee did meet on April 1st and discussed five items, all of which appear on tonight's legislative agenda as resolutions. Resolution 27-2025 authorizes application for Penn Vest loan for the lead service line replacement. 28 authorizes application for Penn Vest loan for the large diameter water main replacement project. Resolution 29 states the city's intent to repay short-term financing with the funds applied for in Resolution 28 for the water main replacement project. And Resolutions 30 and 31 authorize grant applications for South End Park renovations and the Reservoir Park master plan, respectively. That concludes the report of the Public Works Committee.
Thank you, Council Hirsch. Economic Development, Council Med.
Thank you, Council President. The Economic Development Committee did not meet.
Thank you. Finance Committee, Council Royal.
Thank you, Council President. The Finance Committee did meet. During the last committee, we heard from Director Campbell in an update on our budget for year-end 2024, as well as the first two months of 2025. Some of the highlights include that for year-end 2024, most department expenses fell to low-budgeted amounts. In the general fund, the city ended the year with a $1.2 million surplus that will be added to reserves. In the enterprise funds, that include water, stormwater, and trash, we were budgeted to end the year with deficits. The stormwater fund did end the year with a deficit, but that deficit was about $400,000 less than anticipated. The trash fund ended the year with a deficit of about $70,000 more than budgeted. The water fund was budgeted to end the year with a $160,000 deficit, but went in with a $700,000 surplus. The sewer fund was budgeted to end the year with a surplus of $1.1 million, and instead ended the year with a $3.9 million surplus. That surplus will be used to establish a sewer emergency fund. Regarding the first two months of the year, it was still too soon to note any trends, but at our next budget report, we'll have a better sense of any trends for 2025. We also discussed Administration Resolution Number 25, 2025, and Administration Resolution Number 26, 2025, which both appear on the agenda later this evening. That concludes my report, Council President.
Thank you very much, Council Royal. Community Planning Committee, Council Craig.
Thank you, Council President. Community planning did meet. We had one item on the agenda, which was Administration Bill Number Three, amending Chapter 32 to authorize the sale of real property by real estate agents under specific conditions, which will come up on the legislative agenda a little later as an ordinance for first reading.
Thank you very much, Council Craig. And Personnel Committee, Council Cleese.
The Personnel Committee did not meet.
Thank you very much. We'll now move into our legislative agenda this evening. Our first items are in the Historic District. Mr. Harris, if you would.
Yes, Mr. President. Considering the filing and application recommendation from the Historical Architectural Review Board for improvements to a property within the Historic District, one tonight, Rob White and Stacy Coop White, owners of 28 North Long Street, request replacement of five windows on the building's facade, and that application was recommended for approval by the Historical Architectural Review Board. Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Council Craig, anything additional from community planning for this one?
No, there is not. It's pretty straightforward.
Thank you very much. Councilors, you've all been provided with the memo from the department about the Historic Preservation Specialist on this one. Are there any council comments on the motion to approve from the public? Hearing none, Mr. Harris.
Mr. Med, Mrs. Royal, Mrs. Cleese, Ms. Craig, Mr. Hirsch, the president, the speaker.
Aye. Next items are ordinances for first reading this evening. We have one, as Council Craig mentioned, Bill Number Three, 2025. Mr. Harris.
As ordinance of the Lancaster City Council, amending Chapter 32, Real Property, 232.3, Real Property Sale of, by adding a subpart B to allow for the sale of property by the use of Realtors under specific conditions, providing for the repeal of inconsistent ordinances, providing for the severability of the ordinance, and providing that the ordinance will take effect in 20 days after the date of its adoption.
Thank you very much, Mr. Harris. Again, councilors, this is a first read this evening. I'll take any, actually, I will, Council Craig, if you have any additional comments this evening.
I do not have any additional comments, other than the fact that this bill opens up the possibility for us to have more options to be able to sell property when the property does come up, which is very rare for the city to have anything to sell.
Thank you very much for that. I'll also add, Council Craig, because there were some questions at the last meeting, and I believe council has received clarification on, that any sale of property would still come before council as individual resolutions, and each time we would have the option to choose the disposition and the sale method of the property. So it would just add an extra option for council to then make that decision. Any additional council comments on the bill? Council Med.
Thank you, Council President. My only question, we did answer some of these prior, but just wanted to make sure that council would still have the authority over the process in regards to the use of land and making sure that the city's interests are protected in the sale of real property.
Thank you. Mayor Sarachi, do you have anything to add on that piece?
Thank you, Council President. To reiterate your point, this is enabling legislation that would add a potential mechanism for the sale, the disposition of any properties. In the process of developing a specific resolution about a specific property, there would be conversation about the current zoning, what the future zoning would look like related to the comprehensive plan. There may be other desires that the council and the administration have for the future of that. There may be, we may contemplate deed restrictions similar to what is used for other authorities related to the sale of properties to ensure affordability over a period of time that matches the HUD requirements for affordability. Those things could be articulated in a resolution for the disposition of any property, and they would become part of the sales agreement and subsequently incorporated into any transaction in the future. So any Realtor, if we were to opt for using a Realtor, or through a bid, a closed bid, or through a public auction, those things are all in play. This is an addition of a method.
Great. So on a case-by-case basis, we would still be able to make those decisions for each possible property?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you. Any additional council comments for first reading? Council Cleese.
Thank you, Madam President. One question is, how will the funds for this sale be used to aid the city?
Well, that depends on what the priorities are for council. It may be a situation in which we want to prioritize a particular use, and we're looking for a sale, but we're not looking to only to sell the property for the maximum amount of dollars. And right now, the only two methods for disposing of our property basically only weight the sale price and not some of the other considerations in the same way. So that is on a case-by-case basis as well.
Thank you.
Any additional council comments for the first reading from the public?
Tony Dastre, 700 block of New Holland Avenue, Act Two, Why This Bill is Bad for the Public. The ordinance before us, Administration Bill Number Three, is on its surface a procedural update. It allows the city to sell real estate through licensed Realtors in addition to existing methods like public auction or bid. And I understand the appeal. It's framed as a more flexible, professional, and modern approach. But the problem isn't the tool, it's the lack of structure around how we choose to use it. This bill delegates broad discretion to the mayor to initiate sales through private brokers, and while council approval is required by resolution, that process doesn't guarantee meaningful public involvement. Yes, the Sunshine Act ensures the resolution will appear on a public agenda, but that's a procedural minimum, not an invitation to the public. There's no requirement for a hearing, no notice to neighbors, no engagement process, despite the fact the city owns over 250 acres of land within municipal boundaries, about 5% of the city's footprint. And there's nothing in this ordinance to ensure public land stays in public service. No mention of affordable housing, community ownership, nonprofit partnerships, just a transactional framework that could easily reward access over equity. This isn't about opposing Realtors, it's about opposing opacity. And that's where the charter comes in. Just a few months ago, the people of Lancaster adopted a Home Rule Charter that began with a simple, powerful promise. "We, the people of the city of Lancaster, Pennsylvania, aspire to establish the foundation of an accessible, ethical, and transparent government." This ordinance may be lawful under that charter, but it isn't faithful to its spirit. Home Rule wasn't meant to free us from the constraints of state law just so we could turn inward and cut corners. It was meant to give us the tools to govern more thoughtfully, more transparently, and more in step with the people we serve. Because public land isn't just property, it's potential. And if we treat this like a line item instead of a shared resource, we risk losing more than square footage. We lose the opportunity to do better together as a public. Thank you.
Any additional comments this evening for first read?
Darlene Bird, I'm not going to speak long, because I believe I addressed council at the committee meetings that you had over this and my concerns about it. I will challenge council. You know, we're getting ready to have a change of the guards. We're talking about making and changing something basically over Station Six, something that would affect the whole city, and the real reason is because we don't know what to do with Station Six. At the meeting, we discussed about nonprofits. I want to know if council has did any type of research to reach out to possibilities. We talk about not having enough space for our homeless shelter. We have a Station Six that's sitting there, and we're saying we don't have space for that. So I want to know if there's any other thought behind getting rid of Station Six, other than trying to change this administration resolution to, not a resolution, ordinance, which makes it law, and then changing this now. I think if anything needs to be done, it needs to wait till the administrative code is actually intact and presented to council to approve, which you do have to approve, and this is something that we did in the Home Rule Charter. Even as addressing the police, we do have the ethics code that can address some of the issues that people are speaking about. So it's all about council and their due diligence, and if you're going to make the right choices and do the right things. Thank you.
Suzie Gomez, 100 block of North Rose Warren. Just quickly, they would be an extra part of an expense on a subject line, and as I mentioned before, it hurts to go the extra mile to include exactly what Darlene just mentioned. I don't have to repeat it, I don't have to get into it. I think she spoke clearly. I think she spoke in English, especially to the mayor. There's a lot of decisions that you can make for the people.
There's a lot of decisions that you can make for the people, for the citizens, that you swore an oath to defend, to serve. Very questionable.
Thank you, Ms. Gomez. Additional comments from the public for our first reading? Good evening.
Hello, City Council. My name's Richard Boas, live in four hundred block of West Marion Street, and here as a resident, happened to be a realtor, and was not aware of this ordinance, but I just wanted to present to you guys, I'd recommend getting some input from Lancaster County Association of Realtors. This ordinance may or may not make sense, but I would use them as a resource and gain their input before you make a decision. That's all.
Thank you. Good evening.
Hi, Brian Nelson. I live off of, up in New Circle, right off of Columbia Avenue, and Lancaster has a homelessness problem, and we've banned encampments, and we've pushed them out, and we are here talking about property that we could be using to benefit those individuals, just so that way the city can turn a quick profit. I think that it's, these are options for us. I think that opening this up to auctions and stuff like that, you're not, that's not going to make housing more affordable, it opens it up to private equity, and that's just going to make it more expensive. So I think that we need to look at, you know, we have all this land, we've been pushing homeless people out of where they are, we can't house them because there's not much space, and I think that the city needs to look more at options that could be used to benefit those individuals before they try to turn a profit.
Thank you. Additional comments tonight for our first reading?
My name's Aaron Dowrick. I live on the three hundred block of New Dorwore Street. I just agree with everything everyone had to say here. We, as a city, we have, it's obvious we have an affordable housing issue. The apartments that just opened on College Avenue, their waiting list was open for like not even a whole day, and now the waiting list is three to five years long. That's insane. Like, I know personally at least five people that are looking for housing, and you can't find apartments under a thousand dollars a month in this city. That's not affordable to average people, and you're talking about selling properties for profit of the city. Like, we need properties that normal people like me and everyone I know can afford to rent. The high rent prices are making it impossible to have a path to homeownership. Thank you.
Thank you.
Council President, if I may.
Council Madam.
Just to reiterate my question earlier, I mean, this would give council control over what the use of the land would be on a case-by-case basis?
Just like it is today. Is that correct?
Yes, and I'll also just reiterate that council can set parameters for the use, and there is not discussion, I mean, I know that we're talking, we're conflating two things because this is related to Station Six, because it is a piece of property that we've been trying to sell. I'll just reiterate for council's awareness that all of the nonprofit housing developers were approached about bidding on this property. We would like to see nothing less than it become housing, it is part of an R-three residential district. We would appreciate if that were affordable housing, and we are not necessarily looking to make a profit from the sale of this. We are just trying to find the best use for the property and a buyer who will make that happen and will not let the property degrade or, and not have the resources to actually make a project happen at that site. And so, again, this is, we're talking about two things, but we're actually not even ready to talk about Station Six yet, because we haven't even had this conversation. This is about a method of disposal of a property for a better use than it's sitting vacant right now.
And council will determine the compensation paid to the realtor, but who determines who the realtor is?
So that's a professional service, and that is typically under the purview of the administration to select a party in which to sell the property. The terms and conditions of that can be stipulated by council if there are concerns about it being more than what the typical compensation would be for a realtor, but that is a professional service, and that is typically done by administration. But the process of what the future of the property is and so on is a conversation that will need to be had, and it would probably fall under Council Craig's committee should we get to that point. If we don't, we're going to put it out to private bid again, and I'll just remind you that, again, we had one bid that was not for housing.
Thank you. Any additional comments for the first read? I'll just remind folks that this will come up for possibly a vote at our next council meeting. Thank you. Hearing none, we will move to our next item on the agenda, which are resolutions this evening. We do have several of those. Our first is Resolution Number eighteen, twenty twenty-five. Mr. Harris.
A resolution to council of the City of Lancaster, authorizing the disposal of certain obsolete records and conforming with retention and disposition schedule for records of Pennsylvania municipalities. Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Council, I'll take this in Council Diaz's absence. This is a procedural resolution required under the record retention law. We require and allow to destroy deeper copies of certain records. This resolution, I've learned, refers to approximately seven paper boxes of records, and I do want to confirm, as we've learned since our last meeting, that all records remain and are required to remain electronically stored. So, nothing is being destroyed or erased, this is simply the physical paper files, which are no longer required and in some cases required to be destroyed in this certain time period. Any additional council comments on the resolution?
Council President.
Council Madam.
Thank you. Just reiterate that these files are still stored digitally and can still be requested through the Right to Know Act.
Yes.
If the public would like to.
That is correct. Additional council comments? From the public?
Jessica Lopez, Lancaster PA. Thank you for clarifying that. May I suggest, next time that we have something like this, we know these things in advance, so when these questions come up, you're not getting the response that you're getting from the community. If yous would have known in advance that they're digitally stored, y'all could have been said that. And that's just, that's little things that make us feel like yous aren't doing your part in that sense, because that would have been an easy response to everything we said last time. Would have saved yous guys a lot of time and us a lot of frustration trying to figure out what yous wanted to throw away. So, I mean, I definitely appreciate the clarification and that we are going to have them digitally stored somewhere. So, thank you.
Thank you. Additional comments on the resolution?
Good evening. Diane Desmond, I live near the state police, off thirty. I do also appreciate the clarification that they will be stored digitally. That was also a deep concern of mine in terms of accountability and transparency in order to mend relationships and broken trust between the police and the community, so I do thank you for that clarification. I did have an additional question. How will obsolete be defined in these cases? Is it just the seven-year time? Are there other considerations for that word? I would just like to know clearly how obsolete is going to be defined, how that will be determined. Thank you.
Thank you. I can somewhat address that, although it lies a little bit out of my technical expertise, but the resolution specifically references record retention and disposition schedules, and it is, that is set by, pardon, I'm just going through and reading here, records of Pennsylvania municipalities promulgated, that's a fun word, by the Municipal Records Manual issued for the local government records committee by the Pennsylvania Historic Museum Commission here. That's a lot of words to say that it's set at the state level, so we're meeting all the requirements for record retention, and based on the disposition of these items, it sounds like every type of item may have a different record retention. If you've ever done an audit, you know that different things have different retention schedules. This sounds similar. Mayor Sriraj, am I misstating anything?
That was very excellent.
Great. I've done audits before, so thank you for that. Any additional council, excuse me, public comments on the resolution? Hearing none, Mr. Harris.
Mr. Mett. Aye. Mr. Roy. Aye. Mrs. Fleas. Aye. Ms. Grant. Aye. Mr. Hirsch. Aye. President Baker.
Aye. Our next item, Resolution Number twenty-four, twenty twenty-five. Mr. Harris.
A resolution to the council of the City of Lancaster, approving the raising of the Puerto Rican flag to acknowledge the start of Puerto Rican Heritage Month, as brought forth by Lancaster City Council. Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second. This resolution allows us, allows the approval of the flying of the Puerto Rican flag on the date of, looking for the date, November eighteenth, twenty twenty-five, with a backup date for weather of November nineteenth, twenty twenty-five, and this request is put in by Council Royo. Council Royo, do you have anything else to add?
Nothing to add, Council President.
Thank you very much. Any additional council comments on the resolution? And I'll just remind everyone that there is a procedure for requesting a flag to be flown at City Hall. Those requests must be made at least one-hundred-and-twenty days in advance, so plan ahead, and we would love to celebrate you at City Hall. Any, excuse me, any public comments on Resolution Number twenty-four? Hearing none, Mr. Harris.
Mr. Mett. Aye. Mr. Roy. Aye. Mr. Fleas. Aye. Ms. Grant. Aye. Mr. Hirsch. Aye. And President Baker.
Aye. Next item, Resolution Number twenty-five, twenty twenty-five. Mr. Harris.
A resolution of the council of the City of Lancaster, approving an amended capital project list to be funded by the proceeds of the City of Lancaster General Obligation Bonds, Series of two thousand eighteen. Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Council Royo.
Thank you, Council President. Resolution Number twenty-five pertains to capital projects, so as they move forward, funding adjustments are needed as expenses for some projects increase and decrease for others. These adjustments are required for approval of council. These actions are not allocating additional funds, they just move money away, excuse me, just move money between previously approved projects. This specific adjustment is for two-point-three million dollars in the sewer fund bond.
Thank you very much. Any additional comments from council? Comments from the public on the resolution?
Darlene Bird, Ann Street. Is this my understanding that this is bonds that we got, and we didn't need them for projects that were completed, so this money is left over, and now council has the power to say where that money is spent?
So, these are the two thousand eighteen general energy bonds?
Yep.
And some projects, when they were completed, may have some funds left over. We are required them, required to move them to other projects in the fund, but they must stay for their stated use of the bond, so they don't go anywhere else but the projects that were on the list.
That was already on the list.
Correct.
Thank you.
Any additional comments from the public on the resolution?
So those, those funds are going into the sewer, is that what you said? Sewer funds?
Yeah.
One-point-three million?
The, just for reiterate what you had just said, sorry.
Yeah, these funds are specific to the sewer fund bond.
Thank you.
So that's going to go on top of the one-point-four surplus and the three-point-nine million?
This is pertaining to the bond that was funding projects for the two thousand eighteen bond, which is separate than, than what was stated before in the budget update.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Clarification. Did you say that the funds are going to be used toward the sewer projects? Because that's what she asked, and I didn't hear that.
Yeah, that were approved in the two thousand eighteen bond.
We know, and now that there are funds that are left over, and you're going to put them where? And what capital project?
So that bond approved a series of projects within that?
Right, and which, where are you going to apply that two million point, what was it, two million point three or something?
Yeah, so it's still staying within the same bond, it's just going to go to other projects that were with it.
And I'm asking, what are those projects? Are they sewer and water projects, or what projects are they?
They're sewer projects.
They are sewer projects.
If I could clarify.
Thank you.
There's a difference between capital projects.
Thank you.
And I believe what Ms. Gomez was referencing was our operating budget. Our capital projects are separate from our operating budget. There's a capital budget and an operating budget.
Right.
These are for capital costs in the sewer.
In the sewer, and that's where it's going to be spent.
Yeah, correct.
Thank you.
Any additional comments on Resolution twenty-five? Hearing none, Mr. Harris.
Mr. Mett. Aye. Mr. Roy. Aye. Mrs. Fleas. Aye. Ms. Grant. Aye. Mr. Hirsch. Aye. And President Baker.
Aye. Next item, Resolution Number twenty-six, twenty twenty-five.
A resolution of the council of the City of Lancaster, approving an amended capital project list to be funded by the proceeds of the City of Lancaster General Obligation Bonds, Series two thousand twenty-two. Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you.
We have a motion and a second. Council Royo.
Thank you, Council President. This resolution for twenty, or, excuse me, this resolution is similar to Resolution Number twenty-five, except this is for, this pertains to the two thousand twenty-two water fund. The adjustments total five-point-three million dollars.
Thank you very much, Council Royo. So, to reiterate, funds in the water, for use for capital projects in the water fund, funds that were left over that were not used, not needed after projects were completed and being reallocated to other projects on the list for the water fund.
That is correct, Council President.
Thank you very much. Any additional council comments on the resolution? From the public?
Just a quick question.
Yes.
Darlene on Ann Street. So, when, when were these projects due to be completed? Because we're looking at two thousand eighteen bonds and two thousand twenty-two, so what project in two thousand eighteen was completed, and we have money left over, but we didn't use that money toward the two thousand twenty-two when we took out bonds?
So, Ms. Bird, as you may recall, when we take out bonds, there's a list of projects.
Yep.
These are completely separate projects that were planned in the two thousand eighteen bond issue that we just addressed, then on the two thousand twenty-two list.
So the two thousand eighteen bond project was not completed in two thousand twenty-two, it just now got completed? Is that my understanding?
There are some projects that do take that long, yes.
Right, but we're talking about these specific projects for the money?
For Resolution twenty-six, we're talking about specific projects in the water fund.
Right, that, that just got completed in, now, in two thousand twenty-four, and we found out that this money is left over?
Yes, projects do take several years.
Right, and, okay, let me ask you a little differently. Right, I don't think you're following me. So in two thousand eighteen, we had projects that were, we took out bonds for the sewer, and those projects got completed when? That we now have this money left over?
So this, this is...
They only got completed in two thousand twenty-five? Right, okay, well, this one's two thousand twenty-two, the one before was two thousand eighteen. So the projects that got completed, they just got completed in two thousand twenty-five?
Some of them, yes.
Some of these that were funded?
Correct.
And you have a list of them, which ones they were, and how much was left? Because maybe that would make more sense to me.
Exactly. Yes.
Because that's kind of like what I'm asking, because we're borrowing more bond money, and we're having bond money left, and we're paying interest on this stuff.
And the taxpayer got paid money.
You can send it to me, you don't have to.
I'll be happy to send it to you.
If you will, if you will email that to me, that will be fine. I would like to see that and know what projects were completed and how much was left from each project. Thank you.
I can definitely send that to you, Ms. Bird, thank you. And I do think, I don't see, Director Campbell, either, actually, but Director Tina Campbell, I believe you had presented these with us. Could you just speak very briefly if these are available online as well? Or someone who might know the answer.
The, the project list. The, the project lists are attached as exhibits to the resolutions that are online.
Okay, all right, so attached directly to the council agenda. Thank you, okay, appreciate that. But still have to send them, have them in my email, once I can get to it. I will have tabs open. Any additional comments from the public on Resolution Number 26? Hearing none, Mr. Harris.
Mr. Mett.
Aye.
Mr. Roy.
Aye.
Ms. Kleiss.
Aye.
Ms. Gray.
Aye.
Mr. Hirsch.
Aye.
And President Baker.
Aye.
Next item on the agenda, Resolution Number 27, 2025. Mr. Harris.
A resolution of the Council of the City of Lancaster authorizing the administration to execute a financial assistance application on behalf of the city to the Pennsylvania Infrastructure Investment Authority for replacement of lead water service lines. Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Counsel Hirsch.
Thank you, Counsel President. This resolution authorizes application for a PennVest loan up to the amount of approximately 1.7 million dollars to go towards confirmation and replacement of known lead service lines. Resolution authorizes submission of the application, not necessarily to accept loan funding, as administrative requirement from PennVest. City estimates, this is cover costs for approximately 108 water service lines with an estimated cost of 6,000 to 20,000 per line. As many of you know, there are discussions here at council, this is an unfunded mandate from the EPA, and thus the city is starting to prepare for the massive cost of the project. The city is hoping to have these funds available to help defray this cost for property owners, particularly since PennVest loans come with much lower interest rates, as was stated, than bond financing, but are mostly limited to water sewer infrastructure projects like this. Also, there's also grant funding that is available, but has to be, you basically have to apply as a loan to access that funding, and that was also stated by Director Campbell. I'm just going to end my comment by saying each one of us can play a role in keeping these costs down for the city. The city is still inventorying water service lines, so you can do so in your basement, go and take a picture of the water service line and send it to the city. All those details are online, and by, by reporting that and reminding our neighbors to respond to that inventory, that will reduce the cost of the inventory for the city, and I just, I will always take a moment to remind folks about that.
Thank you very much, Counsel Hirsch. Just a question for you, because you mentioned it, and I want to put a fine point on it. The, the point of this funding application, this application for funding, is to complete lead line replacement at no cost to residents?
Correct.
Thank you.
And that, you know, could range depending on, my understanding is it could range depending on what the nature of that, you know, because there's the pot boiling procedure, which is a more expensive way of figuring out what the, what the material is, and then there's, you know, from that to the full replacement, that's that range of the 6,000 to 20,000 cost that would be covered for, for these.
Great, thank you. Any additional counsel comments on the resolution? From the public?
You say there's going to be no, Darling Bird, Ann Street, no cost to the residents, but if it's a loan, because right now you're applying for a loan, it's not a grant. So if we don't get a grant where there'd be other action by council to vote on if it's a loan, because if it does become a loan, that is going to be a cost to the residents.
No, I'm not denying that at all. What I'm saying is that in this particular case, what we're hoping to have these funds available for is actually assisting homeowners with the replacement of the lead water service line.
Yeah.
So that's what I meant when I said no cost. I didn't mean that there's no cost, I mean, obviously, we're, you know, this is 1.7 million dollars in debt financing, there's a cost with that. It's, it's what I was trying to say, is that on an individual basis, we're trying to make these funds available for homeowners, because it is an unfunded mandate, so any money that we can get in to help property owners that might not be able to handle, you know, a 20,000 dollar water service line replacement, that's why we're trying to get this money in.
Right, so, but it's going to be a loan, but the application itself is for a loan or for a grant?
The application is for a loan, and by doing that, that opens up the opportunity for grant funding from PennVest. Is that correct? Director Tina Campbell's not against it.
Right, so I mean, I just want to clarify that, because if we're getting a loan, there is going to be a cost to the taxpayer. Who's going to pay? Right, and?
I'm denying that.
Okay.
Yes, our rate payers may see an impact if this is a loan and not a grant. That's correct.
Let me just, this question, so I don't have to get up again. And so the purpose of applying for two separate applications, that reason is, because I know we have an application fee, why can't we not combine them both for one application for PennVest?
I think it's just because of the nature of these two projects are totally different. Like one is related to the interior service line, and then the other is for the water main that is going from the Susquehanna to the treatment plant, from the treatment plant is always the point of us for, and then to the distribution network.
Right, so it's not a guideline through PennVest that we can't apply for one and get, and only pay one application fee instead of applying for two separate applications and paying two separate application fees?
PennVest requires two separate applications?
Okay, that's what I was asking.
If there was a way to, it would be nice, but they don't allow it.
And if I recall correctly, I think that's, the city is trying to do that because by focusing on specific neighborhoods where there's a high number of known service lines that need to be replaced, that those could be launched together to, exactly what you're saying, like reduce that amount of fees, we don't have to pay each time and plot.
Right, and just for the public, how much is the application fee for PennVest?
This, oh, okay, Director Campbell's.
Director Steven Campbell may have the answer.
Hi, thank you very much for the question. I honestly do not know what the fee is. It varies by application and by the magnitude of the cost, and it's not necessarily the same percentage for every, for every application.
Thank you, Director Campbell. Any additional comments from the public on Resolution Number 27? Ms. Gomez.
And just to clarify, it's only for 108 service lines in the city?
That was the estimate given by this. It could be possibly more or less dependent on how it shakes out, but that's the estimate, yes.
Yeah, we, we knew 10 years ago that this was an issue, it should have been done 10 years ago. It's sad that we had to wait this long and strain the taxpayers to crunch up these numbers and be responsible for this debt. But I really need a copy of the 108 service lines of homes that are going to be receiving this, because 108 service lines, is that just, are you saying within the home or service lines throughout the city?
Through, throughout the city, and to be clear, Ms. Gomez, the city has been updating these lead service lines. This is, I guess, being expedited, that process, because of?
Of the deadline. You're already past the deadline.
That's why, because they basically accelerated the timeline on this process.
Mm-hmm.
And added the interior lines as well. I didn't, I don't know if you want to speak to that, Mayor Sarachi.
Just, just to say, the city has been replacing lead laterals off the water lines for decades, which is why we have so few. The, the new law that has been passed both accelerates the remaining replacement of those lead lines, those laterals, of which there are less than 1% out of the 50,000 lines that are across our water distribution service area. What is new is that utilities are now responsible for the line that is coming from the curb into the house. That was only ever contemplated as being private property, and under the Biden administration, that law was changed. And so the city has been doing the work that it has been required to do to replace all of our laterals. What is new is the replacement of what would have been previously understood as private property. That is now our job, that is now a, a burden that rate payers will have to carry, because there is not enough federal grant money to meet the demand across the country, and this is a point of advocacy through the Water Council and the U.S. Conference of Mayors and other groups that I'm affiliated with, because I do understand the impact to our rate payers.
But it has, but it was a problem. It's always been a problem. And it's, I'm sorry. When's the den, when, when is the deadline?
Sorry, 10 years to replace the lines.
No, the deadline that you have?
10 years?
We're, we're already at the 10th year, then?
No.
It's, it's from now.
It's from now? It starts?
10 years from now.
Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Gomez.
Thank you.
Any additional comments from the public on Resolution Number 27? Hearing none, Mr. Harris.
Mr. Mett.
Aye.
Mr. Roy.
Aye.
Ms. Kleiss.
Aye.
Ms. Gray.
Aye.
Mr. Hirsch.
Aye.
And President Baker.
Aye.
The next item is Resolution Number 28, 2025. Mr. Harris.
A resolution of the Council of the City of Lancaster authorizing the administration to execute a financial assistance, assistance application on behalf of the city to the Pennsylvania Infrastructure Investment Authority for construction of the Susquehanna Large Diameter Transmission Maines. Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Counsel Hirsch.
Thank you, Counsel President. This resolution authorizes an application for a PennVest loan up to the amount of 49 million 293,000 dollars to go towards the Susquehanna Large Diameter Transmission Maines, both Phase 2, the finished water transmission main, that's the one that goes from the water treatment plant to the Oyster Point reservoir, and Phase 3, which is going from the treatment plant, from the river to the treatment plant. Relating to Phase 2, that transmission main is beyond its useful life on paper, so it's an urgent concern privately for the city to address its replacement. PennVest requires projects to be shovel-ready before we can apply for financing for the project. So because this project is still working through permits design, and that process takes years for projects of this scale, the city may pursue interim bank financing until the project can be fully funded by PennVest. This will help the city avoid multi-year interruptions in the process of replacing this water main. Interim financing would mainly be for pieces, equipment, materials needed to make sure that the project doesn't get stalled, given how critical it is, and also the fact that there's a deadline on a $3 million grant to purchase equipment to start this project. City wants to ensure, once construction begins on the project, it doesn't stall at any point due to lack of financing or disruptions with supply chain, et cetera.
Thank you very much, Counsel Hirsch. Any comments from council on Resolution Number 28?
Counsel President, President.
Counselor Mett.
Thank you, Counsel President. I just want, maybe just questions for Director Campbell. The interim, the interim financing as well as the PennVest loan, we look at the budgetary impact it would have, and it's aligned with our projections.
Yes, so we had included this, when we were looking at the 2025 bond last month, we included this in the overall projections, so it would have been part of the graphs that you saw in those projections.
Second.
Thank you very much, Counselor Mett. Any additional counsel comments on the resolution? From the public on Resolution 28?
And clarify again, how much did you say you're looking for for this resolution?
This resolution would authorize an application up to 49 million 293,000.
49 million? And this is in addition to the 41 million bond that council approved just a couple councils ago? Is that correct?
Correct, this is for a different project, but yes.
For a different project? I thought that was for the water main as well? The large diameter water main?
Yeah, the, from the graphs that we had when we did the bond presentation, it had the PennVest loan in gold or in a different color, and that was not a part of the original bond, but that budgetary impact was still projected out over the, the life of the bond.
We talked about it at that.
Yeah, so we're talking about maybe 90 million dollars we will be borrowing, and taxpayers will be footing that bill?
Rate payers in the water system?
Tax, taxpayer, oh, rate payers will pay?
That are, that is the water utility.
The 90 million?
Yes.
Even for the PennVest loan?
Correct.
Okay, very good.
Infrastructure is extremely expensive. This is, I have learned this, it really is.
And, and since we do have 10 years, and I did attend the water meeting that the Public Works Department put on, it was a very good meeting, very informative, I want to encourage members of the public when council or when the city does put on these meetings to attend, because you do learn a lot, and I know that they are working on a plan for the future, a comprehensive plan that may extend our timelines possibly. So while we're saying we only have 10 years now, we did learn that that time could be extended. So I think council really needs to consider before they vote about the cost that you're putting on, and like you said, the water companies, the rate payers, and we know that the city pays the highest rate right now, and we know that's going to be looked into, but you really need to consider that, because government has set up where we can look at other ways of getting, meeting the EPA requirements, and doing that at a lower cost to the rate payer, and extending our time, so that the 10 years could be extended, depending on the comprehensive plan that the water, did I understand that well, right?
If I may, Ms. Bird, thank you, Ms. Bird, just to clarify, you're, you're talking about two different things. I am so appreciative that you went to the combined sewer overflow meeting, which I'm going to actually give in my, talk about in my mayor's report. That is different than the 10-year timeline for the lead and copper roll. So we're talking about three different things tonight. We're talking about infrastructure replacement, which is the 42-inch main, which is what is being considered now. We're talking about the lead line replacement, which is an unfunded mandate that is separate, that is another cost. And then we're also, in a few minutes, I'm going to talk about the combined sewer overflows and the lock-in control plan, which is, all three of those things are different. Yep.
Thank you. Additional comments from the public on Resolution Number 28?
Mayor, I'm listening to what you're saying. You're talking about three different things, but we are also talking about funding that was available from 2018 to 2022 that is being moved over into administrative projects or other, other, you know, projects that could be used for purposes such as the water You can't use it for that.
Are you speaking about the funds left over in the bonds?
As far as the bonds, yeah. Which you're going to get her a copy of where that's going to.
For those items on those lists, we can't change the bond, the allocations of those funds midstream.
But you could use it for some of that, so that the bond can decrease.
No, that's not true.
You can't.
So the 2018 project list, I think, is an attachment, I think Mr. Harris just mentioned that it's available on the website with the materials for the meeting. It lists the projects for 2018. That was for the sewer fund, and there's the water fund. Those were projects from 2022. Those are projects that are listed in the attachment for the materials. What we are talking about are different projects than what is on either of those lists.
I understand that, but projects with funding left over should be used by council for specific reasons, to not burden the taxpayers so much. You know, I mean, there, there's got to be other ways that you can use that. We're not the experts, we're the taxpayers. We pay you the salary so that you can figure it out. I mean, just try to make it make sense. If there's funding available here that can be used for anything else other than specific projects that she's going to submit documents to, to Ms. Bird about, why not use it for these things so that you can't continue to burden the taxpayers? I mean, we're already seeing so much of a burden.
I understand and appreciate your question, and I, I hear you, but when we issue a bond, when we take out indebtedness, we must submit a project list, and we can't change that midstream legally.
It's legal, no, no.
Legally.
Yeah.
So I hear you and appreciate what you're asking, but we're not able to take the funds out of the bond and use it for something that we didn't say we're going to use it out of the bond and use it for something that we didn't say we're going to use it for in the first place.
But they're asking you to consider the amount, and I heard her say that, to have, to consider the numbers. That's all I'm asking, too.
Any additional comments from the public on Resolution 28? Hearing now, Mr. Harris.
Mr. Med.
Aye.
Mr. Roy.
Aye.
Mr. Please.
Aye.
Mr. Redd.
Aye.
Mr. Hirsch.
Aye.
President Baker.
Aye. Next item is Resolution Number 29, 2025. Mr. Harris.
A resolution of the Council of the City of Lancaster to make declaration of official intent to reimburse short-term financing used for the Susquehanna Large Diameter Transmission Maines project with funds received from the Pennsylvania Infrastructure Investment Authority. Most to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Counsel Hirsch.
Thank you, Counsel President. This resolution is related to, or Resolution 29 is related to Resolution 28 in that it pertains to the Pennvest funding that's being applied for that we were just talking about. As stated, the city may need to utilize short-term financing in the amount of $27 million to keep the Susquehanna Large Diameter Transmission Maines projects moving. And this resolution fulfills an administrative requirement from Pennvest to have a resolution stating that the official intent of the city is to pay down this short-term financing when the Pennvest funds are received. So in other words, stating our intent to refinance the short-term financing with more favorable, lower-interest Pennvest funds when we receive that. That's a requirement from Pennvest, and this resolution meets that requirement.
Thank you very much, Counsel Hirsch. And I think we had a conversation during committee about the types of things that we could do in the interim and how we could keep the projects moving, namely purchasing equipment and the impacts of waiting to purchase that equipment because of inflation and the tariffs and the unknown but known impact that it's going, the prices are going to go up. So by doing this, we get insured the best rate on purchasing that equipment. Is that a correct characterization of Director Campbell's comments?
That's my understanding.
He's nodding in the back. Thank you. Counsel comments on the resolution? From the public on Resolution 29. Hearing now, Mr. Harris.
Mr. Med.
Aye.
Mr. Roy.
Aye.
Mr. Please.
Aye.
Mr. Redd.
Aye.
Mr. Hirsch.
Aye.
And President Baker.
Aye. Resolution Number 30 is our next item. Mr. Harris.
A resolution of the Council of the City of Lancaster authorizing the filing of an application for funding through the Department of Conservation and Natural Resources Community Conservation Partnership Program in the amount of $1,385,035 to be used for South End Park. Most to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Counsel Hirsch, yep.
Thank you, Counsel President. This resolution authorizes the City of Lancaster to apply for $1.385 million in grant funds from DCNR's Community Conservation Partnership Program to go towards improvements at South End Park. These funds would go toward upgraded play equipment, a multipurpose field, basketball court upgrades, improved ADA access, water play, new fencing, and improved seating and lighting at South End Park. This grant would, the city's estimating would cover 50% of that cost, and there are other grant funding sources the city's waiting to hear back on, such as the local shares account that could go towards this project.
Thank you very much. Any counsel comments on Resolution 30? From the public. Hearing now, Mr. Harris.
Mr. Med.
Aye.
Mr. Roy.
Aye.
Mr. Please.
Aye.
Mr. Redd.
Aye.
Mr. Hirsch.
Aye.
And President Baker.
Aye. Our next item is Resolution Number 31, 2025. Mr. Harris.
A resolution of the Council of the City of Lancaster authorizing the filing of an application for funding through the Department of Conservation and Natural Resources Community Conservation Partnership Program in the amount of $74,960 to be used for Reservoir Park. Most to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Counsel Hirsch.
Thank you, Counsel President. This resolution authorizes the City of Lancaster to apply for $74,960 in grant funds from the Community Conservation Partnership Program as mentioned to go towards preparing a master plan for Reservoir Park. Improving Reservoir Park was identified as a high priority in the city's parks master plan, and as referred to in this resolution, Reservoir Park has a lot of potential and a lot of potential uses. And so for these reasons, the city would like to prepare a master plan for Reservoir Park.
Thank you very much, Counsel Hirsch. Additional comments from counsel on Resolution 31? From the public.
Darling Bird, I heard you say on the other one for South End Park that you were looking for a match from other grants. Does this require a match?
Director Tina Campbell is waving, or is-
Yes.
-nodding yes.
And where do we plan on getting that match for this?
That I do not know.
Okay, so we're going to approve, counsel's going to approve that we apply for a grant, and we don't know where the money's coming from to match it yet. Is that correct? Is that what I'm hearing?
If you could speak to that.
For this Resolution 31, it's coming from the 2025 bond funds that were just approved.
Thank you.
So we already borrowed the money for the match for this project through the bonds?
That's correct. Additional comments from the public on Resolution 31? Hearing now, Mr. Harris.
Mr. Med.
Aye.
Mr. Roy.
Aye.
Mr. Please.
Aye.
Mr. Redd.
Aye.
Mr. Hirsch.
Aye.
President Baker.
Aye. We have reached the end of our legislative agenda this evening, which will move us into our second public comment period. It's open for comments on issues that were not on the agenda. Again, duration of comments is limited to three minutes per speaker. Please begin with your name and your residence, your block of residence for our public record.
Good evening. My name's Taylor Enterline, Manheim Borough. But I, my name's Taylor Enterline. I'm reading this statement on behalf of John Minda, the founder of the Black Voter Outreach Network of Pennsylvania. Mayor Sarachi, I am addressing you directly this evening because your administration is overseeing a regression in public transparency that is deeply troubling and, quite frankly, unacceptable. Just last quarter, in quarter four of 2024, the Lancaster City Police Department published a use-of-force report that included data disagrated by race and age. That report told an important story. Thirty-six percent of use-of-force cases involved Latino residents, 20% involved Black residents, and seven incidences involved minors, children. That level of detail helped the community understand who is most impacted by use of force and provided a foundation for meaningful oversight. Now, Mayor, those details are gone. The recently updated dashboard on the police department's website is cleaner, but that is where progress stops. It strips away the most essential data points. There is no racial or ethnic breakdown, no information on minors, and no access to previous quarterly reports. The graph presented on the page is visually misleading and hard to interpret. No explanation was provided, no public update was issued, and the change was not even disclosed during the April 1st Public Safety Committee meeting where Chief Mendez spoke at length. To make matters worse, the number of reported use-of-force incidents for quarter four 2024 has quietly dropped from 39 incidences previously documented to 29 now shown on the dashboard. That's a 25% decrease with no explanation. What changed? Are these incidences being reclassified? Are we using a new metric? Are some incidents no longer being counted? If we can't answer those questions, then the public can't trust the data. We are calling this what it is, a rollback of transparency in the middle of a community crisis around policing. It is one thing to issue talking points about accountability, but it is another thing entirely to quietly remove the very information that allows for accountability to exist. When you withhold data, you withhold the truth, and that decision breaks the fragile trust between City Hall and the communities who are asking to be seen, heard, and protected. Mayor Sarachi, you have said that the police oversight boards have no power. There are cities across this country, including here in Pennsylvania, that have past civilian review boards with investigative authority and subpoena power. Lancaster can do the same. The real question is whether the political will exist. In closing, I respectfully submit the following questions to you and ask that you respond in writing to the public before the next council meeting. One, who made the decision to remove the demographic and age-related data from the police use-of-force reports? Two, why were city council members in the public not informed about this change? Three, will your administration commit to restoring the full disregarded reports, including past quarters, for public view, public review? Four, if not, please-
Three minutes, so please be brief and rep-.
I got you. If not, please explain why this data is no longer appropriate or relevant for public access. And five, do you believe the data transparency is essential for public accountability? Thank you for your time, and we expect honest answers in real action.
Thank you.
Hi, Brian Nelson, Afrika, Panion Circle Drive. So I understand while public safety remains a concern, the handling of children should not result in an incident of police misconduct or excessive force. And it shouldn't be up to the department to decide if it was excessive force. That's up to us in the community. It is my belief that community engagement should be done through the office of the mayor or city council, not the department. That consolidates power with them, not us. So I have a pop quiz for you guys. The Citizen Police Review Board is an independent agency within blank created in 1997 to investigate citizen complaints about improper conduct by the blank Bureau of Police through a referendum, through a referendum. I'll let you know that that city is the city of Pittsburgh, here in Pennsylvania. And perhaps it is time that we demand a referendum ourselves. It's not in the CBA, but it didn't matter to the people of Pittsburgh. And better yet, they offered their citizens to join those meetings by Zoom. Citizen advisory boards exist, and they have been done, some with genuine authority. Pittsburgh is an example. Now, it can't be done with no authority, as in Philadelphia, but they have been done. I think that this is something that you guys really need to look into, because it sounds like you saying that this is something that's not possible just sounds like an excuse to not do it or not put in the effort to work with us. We've already seen that the Lancaster City Police isn't willing to come to the table. I have zero faith in their community engagement office if it's not done through citizens. There's nothing we can do to do anything better in our community if you guys aren't bringing us to the table. We've heard from a number of groups today that can contribute to community policing as well. Some of them have left, and the people who came to speak in favor of the police are now suddenly gone. However, I just want to let you know that since 1994, the U.S. Department of Justice has provided grants to over 13,000 law enforcement agencies to support community policing initiatives, highlighting the importance that it has in our justice system. These are things that you guys can do. We've just told you what it is. I expect you guys to actually make an effort to look into it.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Duncan Hopkins. I live in the northeast part of the city. And I want to start out with a question addressing some of the comments earlier in this, earlier in this meeting as well as last week. Why are we spending our time characterizing these kids who were assaulted by police officers as violent? They were riding their bikes without lights, which is a civil offense and not a criminal one. Yet, in the chief's presentation last week and in some comments from folks here tonight, we've been treating these kids like criminals. Traffic safety is important. Ten years ago, I was biking to work when I was hit by a car just half a block from here, and I was very lucky not to be seriously injured. I also was riding with bike lights on, and it was daylight. I've had plenty of close calls, so I certainly understand the need for safety. Every single person in this room does. But that's not what we need to focus on tonight. What we need to focus on tonight is that when the police enforce the laws on the books, they need to do so in an appropriate manner. What took place on March 2nd was a clear-as-day example of police brutality. I dare anyone to watch that video in full, listening to the screams of those kids who are afraid they might join the long list of minors who were murdered by a cop. That encounter was unacceptable, and the consequences for riding bikes without lights should not be being pinned to the ground by an officer with a history of misconduct. I'm speaking about Officer Hatfield. Last week, Chief Mendez stood up here to give a presentation on police use of force, and while I have many thoughts, two main things stood out to me. First, the chief spent a long time talking about how use-of-force reports are reviewed within the department and no time at all on whether and how discipline would be passed on to the offending officer. I think he said, "And discipline may be applied if it's acceptable." That was it. It is unacceptable that he declined to speak about officer discipline in his report. Second, every single council member had the opportunity to ask the chief questions. Some counselors used that opportunity to ask about increased transparency, oversight, and a different use-of-force policy for minors. However, other counselors declined to use this rare opportunity to ask questions in a public forum. For counselors to give up the opportunity to ask Chief Mendez the tough questions that the community has been asking for a month is frankly insulting. And lastly, I'm tired of the back and forth. I'm tired of the excuses, and I wish that this body would spend its time trying to find solutions instead of just waiting for the storm to blow over. You all have difficult jobs, and I get that, but you signed up for it, and you signed up to represent your community. We have a real opportunity to change our city for the better, and it is disheartening to see my city government prioritizing quiet over justice. Chief Mendez has said multiple times that the community has, needs to come to the table. We're here. It's time for this council, Mayor Sarachi, and Chief Mendez to listen. Thank you very much.
Tony Daschra, 700 Block of New Holland Avenue. Act 3, A Vision for Public Involvement. If Acts 1 and 2 were about access and process, this final part is about voice, about creating spaces where the community can engage with institutions that serve them. Yesterday, I introduced online a draft ordinance to establish a community police review board. This board would function in an advisory capacity without disciplinary authority, focusing on reviewing policies, procedures, and patterns to provide recommendations aimed at enhancing public safety and trust. This model isn't unprecedented. In Philadelphia, the citizens' police oversight commission operates similarly and has subpoena power, offering recommendations that led to policy changes within the police department. While it didn't have disciplinary power, its influence contributed to reforms. The goal here is not to undermine law enforcement, but to build a bridge between the police and the community through transparency and dialogue. By identifying areas for improvement and suggesting policy enhancements, such a board can play a vital role in fostering mutual respect and understanding. With council members up for election and others seeking higher office, the direction we choose now will shape the future of public safety in our city. This draft ordinance is a starting point open for discussion and refinement. I've pushed the boulder. You decide whether it is up a hill or down the hill. The essential question is whether we are committed to creating avenues for meaningful community participation and shaping the policies that impact us all. Anyway, that's all for tonight, folks. Thanks for tuning into the Tony Show. See you next time.
Good evening. Diane Desmond again, off Route 30 by the state police. We've heard some positives tonight about the police department by members of the public, but I'd like to be clear that whatever positives may exist do not erase the concerns that the community has voiced and the shortcomings of the police department. I do find it interesting and frankly disturbing that most members of the public who felt frightened by these youth and advocated for harsh punishment were white. As a white person, addressing members of council and members of the community, many of whom are white, I urge you to sit with the discomfort of my observation here tonight. Use that discomfort to reflect and appreciate how frightened these youth feel when facing use of force from an armed officer. Are these feelings of fear comparable? We are still deeply concerned about the policing of youth and the disproportionate use of force against Black and Brown youth, which I would like to clarify and acknowledge is a nationwide issue that Lancaster is not separate from. Can we receive verbal confirmation that the proposal from Baltimore on the policing of youth will be reviewed, considered, and an update on your decision will be given to the public verbally during an upcoming city council meeting? And I would also like to further know by which date. Thank you.
Good evening.
Evening. Brigana Sinkavage.
Brigiana Sinkavage, 700 Block of Marietta. This is my take on April 1st. The Lancaster community showed up yet again to City Hall to demand the end of police brutality. This time, we heard Police Chief Mendez give an off-topic report that blatantly ignored our demands and attempted to shift blame for his department's egregious use of force against teen bike riders on March 2nd onto the community. His presentation was filled with irrelevant stats and policies which addressed none of the tangible concerns and actionable demands. Yes, I don't think that Chief Mendez's presentation was random. He went on and on about gun seizure data, emphasized on teens and early twenties, sending a clear message that the police still are operating under the assumption that Black and Brown bodies are guilty until proven innocent and armed until proven otherwise. This is a thinly veiled attempt to blame victims and alienate... and alleviate any police accountability. Chief Mendez stated during the community outcry that public safety is a two-way street. Mendez is correct, but neglects two key points. The community showed up and offered actual demands that were laid out and continue to be laid out. Building trust takes time, patience, and a willingness to be wrong, none of which were demonstrated by Chief Mendez nor the mayor during this committee meeting. Doing trust means opening up the floor to residents directly to those who have power, including Chief Mendez. We were not given that opportunity, and so I don't believe him when he says public safety is a two-way street and involves all of us. In addition to denying the rights of citizens to speak truth to power, he failed to acknowledge the community's pain for decades of injustice and mistrust from racist policies and policing. This pain cannot be erased by patting yourselves on the back for a few years of doing better. The onus of chain falls on the shoulders of those in powers. If residents are not engaged with police events, the answer is not to take personal demands personally and demand the residents show up; it's to open up a safe forum to ask why and what can be done. Police brutality should never happen, but it does, and the answer is not to shift blame but... or listing harmful statistics of justification of use of force, but to ask why. Why couldn't trained officers handle these citations, such as the incident on March 2nd, and what can be done to prevent future situations of police brutality from occurring? Abram X. Kendi states, "Pain is usually essential to healing." When it comes to healing America of racism, we want to heal America without pain, but without pain, there is no progress. At the end, it was clear Police Mendez and the mayor said members... and some members of city council were unwilling to wade into that pain and join us on a two-way street to healing and policy reform. Without addressing our pain or demands, we will continue to be two ships passing in the night instead of meeting on an equal playing field out beyond rightdoing and wrongdoing. Until open discussion and honest cooperation can be had, we, the community, are left to wrestle with knowing we have a long fight ahead of us. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Betty Jones, South Ann, 200 Block of South Ann Street, I should say. Okay, I'm here again to talk about the trash situation that occurred about a month or so, go back. From 100... the whole block of... the whole southeast section, 200 Block, 200, all the way down to the 400 Block, we received citations, I would call it, for trash, which I came here before and I spoke about it. And I even showed pictures. When I received the citation, I called, and the person I spoke with, she told me that someone had called and complained about it. Okay? I took pictures, and if you can see yourself, it was Wendy, so trash was blowing all over the place. Anytime trash can come from 100 Block all the way down to the 400 Block, I know everyone did not all of a sudden just put trash out, or did not move trash. So I'm coming here again to counsel, to ask for your help. That's why I came, because I don't usually come out and do things like this, but this is important to me. And they told us we have to pay $200... $25 plus a $200 fee now, so that's $225. That is due for each tenant, or I should say owner, in the 200... in the southeast area. So I just want to know what council's going to do about this, and, you know, to help us. I say "us" is not just me, but our whole section, you know, our whole block, from the 100 all the way down to the 400 Block. You guys are here; I'm coming to you because you're supposed to be here to fight for us. So this is what I'm coming for, some kind of results.
Any additional comments for this period?
Yeah, it's shameful to be up here at this podium when we didn't select this job. We asked that you represent the people for this position. It's shameful that we have to be looked at on a psychological standpoint because you're used to psychologically digesting a patient, and things are just being overlooked, such as Betty's trash issue. You don't have an answer for her?
I've been communicating with Ms. Berg, and so does Director Campbell.
Okay, well, it's my time, so I wish Art Morris was here so I can just clearly state that, has anyone ever seen the one-wheel bikers that are cross... go throughout our streets that basically interfere with traffic? They run in and out of cars. They're... they... I know you all seen them. It's one-wheel bike, and there's a bunch of them, and they go all over the street. They do not follow the rules. So for Art Morris to stand here and talk about our children not using specific things that maybe neighborhood engagement could have been targeting to help teach our kids about bike safety because of neighborhood engagement? There are so many different types of resources that we, you know, that we have that we're not getting from you guys, such as a simple question about a trash issue. She didn't have to come here. You don't think she's old enough? She should be home, resting. And you too. You know, the city has become... this is not a metropolitan area. You're forcing this city to be a metropolitan area. Therefore, we're... this square block radius that we have is being disrupted on all sides and all levels. Our kids, they are used to going into the streets. We have bikers. We have one-wheel bikers going all over the streets. I don't understand it. I just don't understand. And then lastly, Harrisburg adopted a bill, Mayor Sarachi. They adopted the bill that was given to you guys, and it's in the mayor's hands. This bill can be passed. It's up to Mayor Sarachi. The burden stands on you. You can make changes in this city; you just choose not to. Karen Schultz from the Boys and Girls Club has... she sits in her desk, and she looks out the window and sees these things happening, but is she sending out brochures? Is she sending out invitations? Or do the Boys and Girls Club have any meetings about bike safety? She's been sitting there for two years? Yeah. I haven't had a flyer yet. I'm pretty sure if I go around the block with Benchmark, with the other gentleman that introduced this new V1 prevention program, he probably doesn't even live in the city. Not only does he not live in the city, he probably hasn't even had a chance to walk four blocks down the road to even speak to the people about his prevention plan. But he got a... he got a grant for it, right?
We've gone beyond three minutes.
Yeah, I understand that. But have some respect for us. Stop looking at us with this scare tactic and this psychological review thing, and we're tired of it. Answer questions. Get things done.
Thank you, Ms. Lopez.
Blacks and brown kids should not have to go through this. This is too much.
You've gone over three minutes, and there is others.
This is too much.
Jessica Lopez, Lancaster City. I do have a... I kind of want to have a little exchange real quick, if you'll bear with me. What is, like, when you guys come in, you take office, you, like, have, like, an ethics oath, right? Like, what you hear in your chambers, what you deal with on the day-to-day in these council meetings, like, how you handle certain things? And I wish Janet Diaz was here for what I'm about to say, because I'm very, very disgusted that every time she leaves these chambers, she jumps on her phone and starts to attack people, but doesn't say anything from these seats, and it bothers me. Last week, like, my emails, like, what she said about me and text messages aside, I really don't care, grown, but last week, she went online after she left council chambers and made a statement about Counselor Ahmed that provoked racist comments about his religious practices and was a direct attack that was so unnecessary. Like, I really, really need to know what is supposed to be becoming of our council members? And what disciplinary matters happen when things like this transpire? Because why does she keep being allowed to do things like this to people? And sit in that seat and get paid by the members of this community? But do they go online and publicly attack people's race, where they're from, and what their religion is? Are they sending text messages at 12:12 in the morning, asking why constituents are coming up here and demanding results? At this point, why do we keep allowing her to finish out her little term here? It's distasteful to the community. It should be disrespectful to each and every one of you at this point. And what gets done? Was there even a conversation had with her after the last situation that transpired on social media? Because I have the screenshots.
May I respond to that, Ms. Lopez? Thank you. First of all, I agree that the comment was...
It was racist.
It was racist and disgusting.
Yes.
Second, I couldn't see it because she has me blocked.
She has me blocked, too, so I sent it to me.
And to your question about what disciplinary action is possible, she reports to all of you. She doesn't report to me; she doesn't report to the mayor; she reports to the voters.
So what can... I mean, outside of her already being about to be on her way out, because she's dang sure ain't about to be our mayor, what can we do intermittently to get her out of that chair, because she don't belong there?
I would like to have a longer conversation about this, but Diane was just speaking generalities that I know it's very difficult to remove a municipal government member in the state of Pennsylvania. It's a state matter, but yes, that's my short version of that answer.
And that...
But I do hear what you're saying.
No, and I appreciate that, and I'm not going to say much more, but that speaks to the people watching on live to really, really pay attention to who we're putting in these seats that we can't remove once they get there. Thank you.
Darlene Bird, 200 Block of South Ann Street. That was a good statement, as we have these council members sitting here, and we continue to come, whether it's a police issue, a trash issue, what are we going to do? I mean, I'm here to challenge council. We've sat here for eight years, and I've come to council, and I've spoken; I've spoken with the mayor. We do not have a plan for the southeast area. When is council going to go to the economic development and say, "We need a plan for the southeast of Lancaster"? We talk about housing; we talk about policing; we talk about the trash issues; we talk about parks, and we're doing all these comprehensive plans, but yet, we do not have a plan for the southeast of Lancaster. And then when we come here and we talk about Black and Brown children, and we say, "Well, we don't have a plan. Our city don't even have a plan for the area which is mostly highly populated." I mean, it speaks volumes, and it's time that council at least requires that the Department of Economic and Community Development, you hire consultants for every area in the city, and we pay consultants to come up with plans, and yet, we have not a plan for the southeast area. I'm asking council to respond to that now, not wait till the next election to see if you sit in the seat again, but do something now. I'm also here talking about a stop sign. We asked for a stop sign in 2019. I continue to come up here, and we talk about safety and safe neighborhoods, and we're told repeatedly why we can't do anything to prevent accidents. Well, there wasn't enough accidents on that corner reported. So what? There was enough near misses, and everywhere else you can look at preventive measures, but when it comes to addressing issues in the southeast, we don't look at preventive measures. A stop sign on South Ann and Green Street is a preventive measure. We're tired of asking; we're tired of keep coming and coming and coming, and I agree. I vote for people that I hope is going to represent me. I don't want to show up at council every meeting. If that was the case, I would run for city council. I'm not running, because I believe I'm electing people that's going to vote and speak in my best interest and the interest of the residents, especially in the South Ann concerned neighborhood. So I'm asking you to do something about not having a plan in the southeast area now, not next year, not in three years from now. Start developing a plan for the southeast. Thank you.
Any additional comments for this period? Ms. Desmond, I'll just remind you that you did speak already in this period, so I'll let you go very, very briefly.
It is a very brief question, and I appreciate that. Thank you so much. Last week, I did have a question about the water rates and how we're going to be impacted as residents, the percentage that we might anticipate of the water rates going up as a result of the improvement projects. I found myself so relieved that it wasn't going to affect me potentially, so I did not receive an answer to that question, and I just sort of skipped off to my seat, and that was a disservice to the community in Lancaster. So I would just like to see if there is an answer that the community can receive and by which date they would receive that anticipated increase in their rates. Thank you.
Thank you. Director Campbell... Directors Campbell, follow up with you about timeline for rate cases, because the rates are determined by those PUC rate cases, which, as we spoke at last meeting, have a timeline of anywhere between eight... eight-plus months. So, thank you. Any additional comments for this period? Hearing none, we'll close public comment this evening, and we'll move to the report of the mayor, Mayor Sarachi.
Thank you, Council President. Related to the use of force data, I want to acknowledge that we have made changes to the use of force data by adding historical data, not just the most recent quarter. I also want to acknowledge that there is not currently data related to race and ethnicity or age, but that will be added by the end of the week, and we should have acknowledged that in a note on the website as we are making these changes to address some of the questions that have been raised. I want to also just indicate, and I believe that I can get this information to you, but the data that we are reporting has changed due to our accreditation and the ways in which we are counting. Use of force has changed, so that after 4/1/25, there will be additional data that is being collected. So calls for service with no arrests after 4/1 would be included in the use of force data. Arrests not requiring force would be included in the use of force data. Arrests requiring force were always included in the use of force data. So all this to say is that the data is going to look different after 4/1 because of the accreditation process. And so, we will note this more clearly on the website. It should clarify the change in the collection, how the recording data, which will be more, and include, again, the race and ethnicity and age. So that data is going to be available by the end of the week. So I just wanted to let council know that. The second thing is that the Department of Public Works recently held a public meeting on the city's long-term control plan, of which Mr. was in attendance, to reduce combined sewer overflows into the Conestoga River. As I mentioned, we are... have four major issues that we are trying to address presently, and I have spoken about this in my State of the City, as a perfect storm of both unfunded mandates, as well as the need for improvements in our infrastructure, and as Council President pointed out, it's all very expensive. So in addition to the combined sewer system and the long-term control plan, we have a lead-up copper line regulations, which have extended the responsibility of the city and the cost to rate pairs, as well as our aging infrastructure replacement needs, as well as PFAS. When you add all these things up, it is a lot of money. I do want to dispose... I do want to just focus my comments tonight on the combined sewer overflows and the long-term control plan. So the city has made progress reducing our CSOs through the implementation of green infrastructure and other facility improvements, and there's a lot more work to be done. At the meeting, Christine Volke-Hilrich, Deputy Director of Public Works for Utility, shared the city's work to comply with the US EPA consent decree, which was signed in 2017, and the development of our long-term control plan to minimize the impact of CSOs over time. A few takeaways for council's awareness. The city continues to evaluate multiple strategies to reduce combined sewer overflows, including gray infrastructure upgrades, green infrastructure temporary water storage, and a separation of stormwater from the sewer system. The estimated cost to meet the CSO regulations ranges from $30 million to $73 million. The implementation timeline will depend on the financial impact to residents, meaning how quickly we proceed depends on what our community can afford. This is a point of major contention because the federal government will take into consideration affordability only as it relates to our combined sewer overflows, but not in relation to other mandates. The city is continuing to assess CSO reduction options, gathering public input, and identifying a preferred alternative that balances regulatory requirements with the economic, environmental, and community considerations unique to Lancaster. The next step is submitting our long-term control plan to the EPA, initiating a process to finalize the costs, timelines, and methods for reducing CSOs. While there were very few people in attendance at the meeting, this is really important that the community understand what is at stake. There is a recording on the city's YouTube channel, and more information can be found at Engage Lancaster, and I encourage council members to review the slides, because as Ms. Burke indicated, I do believe that it was a very informative overview of both the challenges before us, the work that has been done, the progress that has been made, and what the work is now to submit the long-term control plan to a new administration, which continues to evolve even as we speak. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mayor Sarachi. Next item is the report of President Council. I do have a brief report to give this evening. I've reflected a lot over the last month about the job and duty that we entrust our police officers with in Lancaster. I've listened to city residents speak about interactions with police, some positive, some negative. I respect and appreciate that it's a job that often brings you into situations with people who could be having the worst day of their lives. I've also reflected a lot recently about the work that our police department has done over the last several years to respond to the needs of the community. Some of that response and work we heard about earlier this evening from organizations in our community. We will also soon hear about the work the department has done to receive accreditation. I do trust the internal controls and review processes of our department and believe that our officers are working in good faith with our community, and I believe that continuous improvement and responsiveness is not only possible but necessary. I trust that our police department will continue to uphold the high standards our community expects and deserves, and I look forward to reviewing the information that was given to us this evening about different use of force options for youth. That concludes my comments. Council comments this evening.
Council President, if I may.
Councilor...
This is a comment more of a question. When these weather-related trash concerns come up, is there a way that the city could waive the fees, or is there a way that the citizens can appeal the citations?
Thank you, Councilor Med. Yes, there is an appeal process for citations, and it's outlined, there's a certain number of days I don't have in front of me, but they do need to, I believe that they need to pay in the interim, but I know for sure that they need to have the, the reason for the citation needs to be cleared in a certain number of days to avoid the additional penalty for having someone go out and clean it up.
Thank you, and I'll follow up with Council President and Director Campbell and the mayor with some additional questions.
Thank you. Additional council comments this evening?
Council President.
Council Craig.
Thank you. I am deeply aware of the concerns that have arisen regarding recent reports of police using excessive force toward teenagers riding bikes downtown on our downtown streets. These concerns weigh heavily on me, as I am a mother of six, five boys, 12 grandsons, and one great-grandson. These concerns weigh heavily on me, as they should all of who are committed to ensuring the safety of every individual within our city, particularly our young people. First and foremost, I want to acknowledge the voices of those who have spoken out. Your concerns are valid and are a vital part of keeping our city government transparent and fair. As a member of City Council, my responsibility is to listen to you, understand your concerns, and work tirelessly to address them. This moment calls for us to reflect on the kind of community we want to build, one where young people can navigate through our neighborhoods without fear, where families can feel assured of their children's safety, and where law enforcement earns the trust of those who are sworn to protect, they are sworn to protect. In doing so, I must recognize that public safety is a partnership between residents and police. Mutual respect and understanding are essential in fostering a community where everyone feels safe and valid. We must ensure that our local law enforcement embodies the values of fairness and respect, especially when interacting with our youth. To that end, I reviewed the video footage and reports, and I also reviewed the Bicycle Safety Organs, number 158 of 2023. In addition, I also listened to community members' thoughts and feelings regarding this incident to uncover what happened and why. After this thorough review, I have concluded that the youth were in violation of bike riding safety protocol, and when stopped, did not cooperate with the police. Therefore, the police acted within law enforcement practices and training protocols in stopping and detaining youth. As we move forward, this moment calls for us to reflect on the kind of community we want to build, one where young people can navigate their neighborhoods without fear, where families can feel assured of their children's safety, and where law enforcement earns the trust of those they are sworn to protect. As a member of City Council, I'm committed to the safety of our young people, and mutual respect and understanding to foster a community where everyone feels safe and valued. Let us work together as partners and continue to build a city defined by fairness and mutual respect. Thank you for your engagement, your vigilance, and your commitment to our community well-being. That's pretty much what I have to say. You know, I'm concerned about all the things that have happened over the last few weeks that have centered around the incident that happened downtown. That could have been, that could have been very well one of my children, one of my grandchildren, and, you know, I, you know, all we have to do is try, I have to try and do better. You know, it has to, we have to meet at some happy medium, and I really think that most of the things that have happened here, some of it has been very brutal, and, you know, the name-calling, I think that's unnecessary. We're not going to get anything solved with calling each other names or thinking bad thoughts about each other. We're going to have to sit down at the table, discuss what needs to happen, and stop making so many demands on each other that are going to make people angry. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Craig. Any additional council comments this evening? Hearing none, and having reached the end of our agenda, I'll hear a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
A motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Clear adjourn. Thank you.